President, Dr. Salvatore, Board of Education members, Central Office Administration, parents, family and friends. It is with great pleasure that I introduce two of our extremely talented, polite, wonderful Catrimbone students who will lead us this evening in the flag salute. Please join me in giving the thunderous green wave welcome to Cassandra Guzman and Marcelo Ferreira. Just also welcome her parents, Cassandra's mom and dad, Mariano and Wendy Guzman. If you would please stand. I don't know if little brother Giovanni is here? Please stand, G. How about Natalie, big sister? No, she couldn't come tonight. Okay. Cassandra is better known to her friends as Cassie. She's a fifth grader in Mrs. Brown's class. Ms. Brown describes Cassie as an all-around great kid. She says that she's an excellent student who is respectful to her teachers and she takes learning very seriously. Beyond that, Cassie is caring, compassionate and has an optimistic attitude. Mr. Brown, Mrs. Brown says, quote, "My students and I really hit the jackpot having Cassie in our class this year. She is an absolute pleasure to have in class." I think that deserves a round of applause. Now Cassie's favorite subject is math because she says she picks it up very easily and that doing math puts her in a good mood, especially math projects. I haven't heard that before, but I think that deserves a round of applause. Math puts you in a good mood. Cassie's hobbies include riding her scooter, playing with siblings and watching her dad play soccer on Sunday. As far as career plans are concerned, Cassie plans to either be a doctor or a teacher. She says that she is inspired to be a doctor because several family members, she has several family members who are doctors. However, Cassie says her true passion is children. She says that she comes from a large family that has made her consider teaching because she loves the opportunity to teach younger family members every chance she gets. I think we have a future teacher on our hands, don't you? Another round of applause for Cassie. Now other pledge student, Marcelo, just arrived. You guys over here? Okay. Our next student, Marcelo, is a fifth grader in Miss Choi's class. Miss Choi describes Marcelo as an ideal student. He comes in every day eager and ready to learn. He is always smiling and brings contagious positive energy to his classmates. He's an excellent role model to his classmates and his peers. Now his favorite subject, when asked about it, Marcelo says that his favorite subject is without question science because he gets to explore new exciting experiments and build robots. He says that he really enjoys the feeling when he gets to create something. Going along with his love for creating, Marcelo's favorite hobby is coding, coding and more coding. He shared that he started coding when he was seven years old after being introduced to a coding program by Mrs. Adenizio, our recently retired GLC librarian. Mrs. Adenizio, would you stand? Since he learned how to code, he spends most of his time after school and on weekends creating video games to share with his friends. As far as his career plans are concerned, they're very clear. He wants to become a video game designer and a famous YouTuber so he can share his love of coding with others. Let's have another round of applause for Marcelo. LaShonda Starks, Santos Rodriguez, Renee White, Daniela Bonfim Staviel, Ingrid Garcia, Dominique Taylor, Carlos and Maritza Rodas, Melissa Brock, Michael Fleming and Gada Ahmed Ismail. Let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you very much. And can we have one more round of applause to our awesome parent volunteers? Thank you very much for all that you do. Got it? Hold on, he just wants to take a quick picture. He likes, he likes for you to wait a little bit. It's a better picture. There you go. Awesome, thank you. At this time, we're going to ask one of our Board of Education members, Mrs. Violetta Peters, to head to the podium as she introduces our Teacher of the Month for the month of September. And this person happens to be from the George L. Catrimbone Health and Physical Education teacher. Let's give it up for Mr. Fred Bellina.
Mr. Fred Bellina has worked for Long Branch Public Schools for 39 years. Currently, he is the physical education teacher at GLC. Mr. Bellina makes a daily impact every day at GLC with his positive demeanor, love for children and his continual effort to get everyone up and dancing. He has volunteered several afternoons each week this school year, choreographing and working with staff members on a dance that will perform on the board tonight. Can't wait. Students and staff also perform these dances throughout the year during special activities held at GLC. Mr. Bellina completes his daily job responsibility at the highest level and motivates others to do the same. And it's for these reasons that Mr. Bellina has been selected the Long Branch Public Schools' Educator of the Month.
One more round of applause for Fred Bellina, everybody.
Members of the Board of Education, Central Office Administration, faculty, parents and members of the community who are in attendance this evening, this is my monthly report. The George L. Catrimbone Elementary School, led by Mr. Volpe, prides itself in creating a warm, open and welcoming environment. He and his staff are invested in the Go Green mentality, which over the last six years has become an important aspect of the school culture. In fact, the school has been recognized for earning the highest number of points for the Sustainability Award given by the state of New Jersey. GLC is also hosting an October environmental parade. Exciting new programs stem from that idea to remain up and moving for oneself and environment. Recently, the school has implemented a more physically fit routine incorporating music and dance into the daily agenda. This serves to make students more active outside of recess. As part of this new initiative, the children are instructed to partake in a total of 150 minutes of active time a week. This leads, this leads away for a healthy lifestyle beginning at a young age. Physical fitness is included as part of a daily reschedule. Every morning before the day begins, the students gather to enjoy a brief dance exercise before going to class. Brain breaks are also fit into the classroom routine between lessons, students participate and two-minute physical fitness activities that also help to increase movement. Additionally, GLC implements fitness programs. As per Mr. Bellina, it is a program that has been in place for the last six years. He likes to call it Dance Gym. Students from kindergarten through second grade are instructed every Friday morning to perform Dance Gym in the gymnasium before being taken to class. Students are taught various dances during the year and students absolutely love starting their Friday mornings with Dance Gym. Furthermore, the school has numerous after-school programs in which over two-thirds of the school participates. Two of the most popular after-school programs are the Multicultural Committee and the Future Leaders Club. The Multicultural Committee celebrates the diversity of a GLC school family and teaches the students as well as the staff about cultures that are different than their own. The Future Leaders Club was created with the 21st century initiatives in mind. Throughout the year, club members utilize 21st century skills such as creativity, collaboration and communication to model leadership qualities. Our future leaders promote kindness and a positive school climate. Overall, Mr. Volpe has instilled a very physically and environmentally conscious community within the George L. Catrimbone School with the help of personal connections created in a vivacious atmosphere. This growth mindset allows for students to have a greater connection to not only the school but also personal awareness and the environment. These passionate minds are our present and our future. They are molded by the outstanding principals, teachers and staff of our George L. Catrimbone Elementary School. Thank you.
Chris Volpe. Good evening, Dr. Salvatore, members of the Board of Education, Central Office Administrators and of course, parents that come out all the time to support our school. We always appreciate it and I know it's a rainy night, but thank you so much for coming out. And before I say anything, I want to thank Ms. Gardner, you did a great job. Appreciate the time coming over to highlight our school. Great job, thank you, we appreciate it. As you know, all in the United States, from September 15th to October 15th, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And for the GLC school, it's been our theme for the last five years in our board presentations. This year, we wanted to do something just a little bit different. Our superintendent each year leads us off in the beginning of a year with a great message and what really we should be focusing on in our schools. Changes year to year, but this year, for the parents that are out there who don't know, it was social, it was geared towards social emotional learning and the importance of, you know, healthy living. So when we were creating our theme this year for our show, we wanted to just raise some questions of what some Hispanics did in the 16th, 16th century and what they did to take a break from their daily stressors of life and, and how they basically kind of took a break from it all and, you know, took a break. So what we wanted to do is go back in time a little bit and dance our way up into the, into the night. So I hope you really enjoy this show. Before I do leave, I want to say a special thanks. I know Mr. Fred Bellina just got awarded District Employee of the Month, but he's been the center stage centerpiece, I should say, for our board presentations for the last five years. And he got a chance, I got a chance to talk to him in the beginning of the year and it is going to be, it's sweet today that he's getting awarded, but he did say this was going to be his last year in education, so this will make his 40th year. And he's done amazing things for children in the middle school, elementary and even early childhood, so we're going to miss him. So I just wanted to give him a little extra shout out today. He's a great guy and he's been working hard on a special one this year, so we hope you enjoy the show and take it away. Have a good evening, everybody.
Hello everyone and thank you for coming out to tonight's GOC Show. Okay, okay, just right now. Welcome back to tonight's GLC Show. We of course have, have exciting new guests for our year-long celebration of social emotional learning. I know, I know, so exciting. Out of all the surprises for the audience, that's right. You get on, you get on, you get on, you get on. Hugs and high fives all around. We want you all to feel welcome tonight. I can't wait to see who we have here tonight. Let's kick start it right away with celebrating our Hispanic heritage with our first guest all the way from the 16th century Central America. Drum roll, please. It's the Inca, the Aztecs and the Maya. Here are the Xiquiro, which means backstabbers, and Itla, which means rainbow gods. Well, that must have been quite a trip for you. How are you feeling?
Yes, well, a tick.
Oh yes, it was quite a trip for us.
Today, we are so happy, cheerful and thankful. We are so grateful because we just had so much rain and we reached up to it and helped our crops grow.
That's awesome. How did this come about?
Well, we were having such a move down at home, so much to miss. We hurried because of crops that had already no reason to harvest. So, to overcome this, we danced to Edgelys. We watched from the range from above and now our crops are hard.
Now that's something we have to see. And we're back. Please help me welcome our next guest, straight out of the mid 1900s, around the corner in good old New York City. We have the Vanya All-Stars here with us. Thank you for joining us. As we know, our topic tonight is all about social emotional learning. So tell us some stress N-words you had immigrating here to the United States.
Right, we weren't being accepted. It was really hard to find work. We were really struggling to just get in the day. It's really hard to deal with the worries of coming to a new country and trying to find where to begin.
You're exaggerating. So what did you do to relieve the stress?
We danced and sang. We mixed our beautiful soft music with African rhythms. This beautiful fusion here for to satisfy.
Now that's something I can rap. Well, maybe it's not my turn. So let's let the Vanya All-Stars take it away. It totally amazes me that the reasons for stress and worries may have changed over the years, but our ways of coping with them have remained. From dancing for rain, for finding ways to fit in, people have celebrated with music and those traditions still go on today. Students and teachers support their emotions with movement and voice in the classroom. When students connect with dancing, their compassion, empathy and joy is alive and we can celebrate together. Now let's see some of this musical celebrating with our musical guest from the GLC, from the GLC School, the GLC Dance Team and their energized rhythmic leader, Senor Alfredo Bellina.
LaShonda? Thank you very much, everybody. I'd like to say a few words. My wife told me to keep it short and simple, but I don't care. This is my 40th year, this is my last year. Just be a little patient with me. I've got so much to be thanked for. First, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for blessing me, first saved me and blessed me these 40 years, given me the greatest job that anybody could have in the world. This is the greatest job, it's awesome, I'm talented, so grateful. And on top of that, I've got eternal life, so that's unbelievable. You've been so good to me, thank you, Lord. I want to thank my family here tonight, well, half of them tomorrow, my wife, beautiful wife, thank you, Barbara, these 40 years together, made it. Looking forward to the time with you. My awesome, couldn't have a better son. I was wanted, so blessed to have my son Jeremy, his wife Christine and my grandkids Cadence and William. Had a pop student night, pops is okay tonight? Thanks. And my daughter Jessica, her husband Clark and my two grandsons, Trent and Troy, couldn't be here tonight. I'm sure they would love to be, I hope they're proud of me. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, you guys do a fabulous job. Mr. Perez, thank you for coming to my Valentine dances. Guys should come to my Valentine dances, they rock, you'll be rocking it, right, at the GLC? Glad to make it this year. And special, special thanks to Mr. Kovan. Mr. Kovan and I grew up here in Long Branch. We've been knowing each other since we were eight, nine years old, played high school football, basketball together. He should have made, he should have been in the pros, by the way. I couldn't believe it, but he's a great man. Thanks for all your help in my teaching. I'm telling you, I love you, brother, so much. And I want to thank Superintendent, Mr. Salvatore, doing an excellent job. He gets an award every month, so that says a lot about him, about how he's doing here. Certainly, Mr. Freeman, we go back to the old middle school days. I always thank you, you're always a great listener, always try to do things. I appreciate and respect that about you so much. And what can I say about Mr. Volpe? Every time we have a Valentine's dance, I always say, he is the best principal in the state of New Jersey. Not done, I'm not done, I'm not done. So any principal, anybody really wants to be a really, really great principal, you should follow him. He's, he's the role model for, for being a great principal. And Ms. Merks, the last two years, great addition to our school, doing a great job. Where's Ms. Merks? Ms. Merks, this is me. All right. And Mr. Villacres, thank you. It could be on YouTube tomorrow? Thank you. I want to thank the greatest coworker in the world, Mrs. Abner. Where's Mrs. Abner? I want to thank the greatest coworker in the world, Mrs. Abner. Where's Mrs. Abner? And the special team. I work with about twelve, twelve special team members. They are awesome, talented, they work above and beyond. Come on out here, special teams. Raise your hand, special teams, come on. All right. And the teachers, did a great job. I scared the living daylights out of them when I told them to do this dance. They did it. I'm so proud of you. Great job, guys. No fear. And the, and the students. Awesome. You guys pulled it off. In the beginning, I was carrying you. I was carrying you, and now I think tonight you carried us. We carried each other, all right? And my last thing, as I promised you, we're going to have a pizza party. And I forgot to tell you, you're paying for it, Mr. Volpe. You're loaded anyway. Thank you. Thank you so much. God bless, everybody. How about we give Fred a round of applause, everybody? There we go. Thank you for forty years of hard work and dedication. Thank you again.